Hello, everybody, and welcome to the Retail Now 2024 Town Hall. I'm Jim Roddy, the President and CEO of the RSPA, the Retail Solutions Providers Association. We're so glad you're joining us today. We have many, many folks joining us live, and I know we always have folks listen on demand because Retail Now is one of the highlights of the year in the retail IT industry. We get a ton of members who attend this event, but we also have folks who aren't familiar with the RSPA. So if you're not, we're North America's largest community of VARs, software providers, vendors, and distributors in the retail, restaurant, and grocery verticals. So we're a fit for any organization that's serious about growth in those markets. And many of our member companies, we have almost 750 member companies. They've been part of our community for decades, and we frequently add startup tech companies because we accelerate their growth, and they see the massive ROI that an RSPA membership offers. And from a new member standpoint, we are closing out our fiscal year in about three weeks. During this fiscal year, we have already added, so over the past 11 and a half months, 119 new members. So again, at Retail Now, you'll be able to reconnect with folks you might have known for a year or years in the industry, and there's all sorts of new folks who will be at the event as well. So if you're serious about growth in the retail IT channel, and if you want to receive the discounted member rate to attend or exhibit at Retail Now, email us at membership@gospa.org. That's membership@gospa.org. All right, so I'm going to be joined today by two of my RSPA colleagues. Ashley Nagy is the Vice President of Member Services, and Kathy Meter is our Vice President of Member Education. And Kathy's going to start us off going through some of the logistics about today's session. Hey Kathy, how are you?
Hey Jim, I'm doing great. Hope everybody's having a good week. Just a few reminders for our call today. We have muted the lines for the duration of this call. We have received several questions along with registrations, so we will get to those and as many of your questions as we can today. You can still submit questions if you haven't already using the control panel picture there on your screen. We are recording this session, as Jim mentioned, for future reference, and you will, all registrants today, will receive a link to the recording as well as a summary of our Q&amp;A document as follow-up. And now, let me turn it over to Ashley Nagy, our VP of Member Services. Ashley?
Thanks Kathy. Hi, everyone. Excited to connect with you all today. A big thank you to our event sponsors. Without the support of these companies, events like Retail Now and many of the things that we do throughout the year would not be possible. So a big thank you to Blue Star, Cardnox, CoCard, IPOs Systems Déjà Vu, QuickPOS, Linga, and Washburn. Again, a big thank you to these sponsors. And then for our annual sponsors, thank you to our Platinum Annual Sponsor, Blue Star, our Gold Annual Sponsors, CoCard, Epson, Heartland, and ScanSource, our Silver Annual Sponsors, Ingenico, MicroTouch, Star Micronics, Tonic, and Truist, our Bronze Annual Sponsors, APG, AutoStar, CRS, DataCap, Kitchen Armor, Corona POS, Newlin AI DC, Optima, Order Counter, Shifur, TD Senex, and Toshiba. And then here you have our community sponsors sponsoring our Next Gen, our Cannabis Community, our W2W Community, our ISV Community, and our Canadian Community, as well as our media partners and association partners. Again, a big thank you to these sponsors who sponsor not only Retail Now, but so many of the things that we have available for our members throughout the year. And now I'll turn it over to Jim Roddy to take us through today's agenda. Jim?
Great. Thank you Kathy and thank you Ashley. So here's what we're going to cover today during the Town Hall. First, why to attend Retail Now in general, and then also what new things are happening at the event this year. We're also going to give updates on registration, on the expo hall, and on sponsorship as well. We'll talk about the networking events at Retail Now, what you should expect for those, and when they're going to take place. Kathy's going to share some education highlights from Retail Now. She's going to share the tracks that we're going to have, and then one or two education sessions under each one of those tracks. We'll share some more details on the official hotel. You can see it in the bottom right-hand side of your screen there at the Paris Hotel in Las Vegas. And then again, we're going to answer your questions. We received several in advance, but again, use that question function as well in order to do it. Before we move on, I just want to say, so I'm looking at the list of folks who are attending this call live. We have some new folks, some folks who've been to Retail Now. So the event is always going to have, we hope, that same, really a community feel to it. When we had the 75th anniversary last year, we had folks who, you know, have been to 30, 40 Retail Nows before, before it was called Expo Tech, and people really loved the feel that it had. And then we had a whole bunch of folks who were first timers at the event, like brand new to the community, and they felt so warmly received, that they were so enthusiastic to say, "It's so nice to find a community," or the Seth Godin term is like a tribe, right? A lot of folks were in the same battle together. We're all fighting to improve our business, and we're working together in order to do that. So again, if you haven't attended Retail Now before, it just really has a unique community feel to it. But we do new things every year as well, right? It's not like the same old, same old. And one thing you're going to see is Kathy's going to highlight it a little bit is the schedule's going to change. So if you've been to past Retail Nows before, make sure when Kathy gets to the schedule portion of it, you're going to see it still begins Sunday night. It's still going to go through Tuesday afternoon. But what we do, especially on Monday and Tuesday, in terms of when the expo hall is going to be open and education sessions taking place, make sure you pay attention to that, and that's based on feedback from the community. And again, you can see in the lower right-hand screen, we're at the Paris Hotel in Las Vegas. Big thing is, Las Vegas is where we tend to get our largest attendance historically. We've only been there, I think, once in the past 10 or 11 years. I think it was back in 2017. But again, that's really what's going to make this event special. The community itself, the new things that we're doing, and also the fact that we're back in Vegas. So, all right. Well, some folks might be asking, if you haven't attended before, this Retail Now you speak of, what is it? So we say it's where the industry meets. And the reason we say that is, in our industry, there is no shortage of events, that's for sure. But some of them only play in the retail space, right, and have retail end users, or restaurant end users, or grocery end users there, or distributors, payments companies, software providers. They have their own conferences, but that doesn't span the entire industry. Retail Now, it is, again, truly where the industry meets. You'll see all the distributors. You'll see all the payment companies, the software providers. Hundreds of value-added resellers are going to be there as well, and they're all getting together and collaborating. So you have partners in the room, you have competitors in the room, but you get that full community IQ. It's not just one slice of the industry. You're able to dive in and over right around 48 hours across, again, you know, two and a half days, you'll be able to get all that information. Again, the verticals that we focus on, restaurant, retail, and grocery, and all the sub-niches are underneath there. So it was funny, I was just talking to somebody recently about the RSPA. It's somebody who's played in the broader retail tech industry, and they're like, wow, this is really a fine slice of the industry, right? It's not just broad and all things to all people, and that's 100% correct. So if you're a solution provider, you know, if you're a VAR, ISV, a vendor, or affiliated with them, and you're playing in any of those vertical markets, Retail Now is truly where the industry meets, and where you can meet new partners, and where you can really get immersed in the retail IT channel. And so this is not our first rodeo. Ashley Nagy, if you want to share with folks in particular what happened at Retail Now 2023 in terms of, by the numbers?
Thanks, Jim. Yeah, so at Retail Now 2023, we had 160-plus exhibitors on the show floor, just over 1,500 registered attendees. And in that mix, over 400 of them were VAR executives that were attending. So these are solution providers that are out looking for new solution partners and new solutions to sell and/or connect with their current solution partners as well, and over 300-plus ISV attendees. Nearly half were first-time exhibitors. Also, nearly half of the show floor were ISVs. So all sorts of software technology solutions, hardware, and payments as well, all under one roof. And we had 20-plus education sessions during this event as well. So really having that true focus on roll up your sleeves, education workshops, to be able to learn from one another, share best practices, challenges, and become a part of that tribe that Jim was mentioning earlier. So that's a little bit about Retail Now 2023. So let's talk a little bit now about who is going to be at Retail Now this year. So again, huge focus on our VARs or value-added resellers, our DISDs. So those are our direct-selling ISVs. Many of them have maybe been resellers in the past, and now they have their own solutions that they're offering, or maybe they have their brand-new solution from a software standpoint that they're just starting to sell direct and eventually evolve into what we call a channel-supported ISV. And we are going to have, again, this year, nearly half of our exhibitors that are signed up so far are channel-supported ISV or software solution providers. We have a ton of our, what I'll call, traditional vendors there, some new faces in that realm as well, whether it's hardware or solution services and things of that nature. And then all of the large distributors in the industry are going to be well represented at Retail Now and on the show floor, and we are expecting an even larger turnout this year with 1,600-plus attendees expected. So far, just from a registration standpoint, we are 49% ahead of pace over the last three years. And as Jim mentioned earlier, Vegas is always a huge turnout. So really looking forward to that. Now I'm going to turn it back over to Kathy to walk us through the Retail Now 2024 agenda. Kathy?
Thanks, Ashley. So here's a quick look at our high-level agenda. Just as a reminder, we will constantly continue to develop this agenda as we confirm speakers, as we confirm specific education sessions. But this is the, this is the high-level structure, and this, this structure in these times will not change. So as you're making travel plans, you can keep that in mind. I'll also note a couple of things that are a little different this year. So we'll kick off the event on Sunday, July 28, and we'll start with our ISV and cannabis communities hosting a reception from 4:30 to 5:30. Then we'll move into our first look and welcome reception. This will again be on the show floor, and it draws a great crowd year after year. So this is one you don't want to miss. And then we'll close out Sunday evening with the Canadian Community event, their reception, running from 7 to 8. On Monday, Monday morning, we will kick off the day with education. Monday morning, we're going to kick off with education. So this is a little different. We're bringing back morning education, based on a number of requests that we've had over the years from people. So we'll have our education blocks on Monday morning from 8 to 10, and then we'll open the expo hall. That will be open until 3. We'll have lunch on the show floor as usual. General session will be held in the afternoon, and then we'll wrap up Monday, Monday's events with a W2W and Next Gen Community Reception, which will run from 5 to 6:30. And then on Tuesday, we will open the exhibit hall at 9. That will run until 2. Again, we'll have lunch on the show floor, and we'll offer our next two blocks and our final two blocks of education from 2:15 to 4. So Retail Now will conclude at 4 o'clock as you make your travel arrangements, something to keep in mind. And Ashley, we talked a little bit about the exhibit hall, but let me hand it back over to you to give some more detail.
Thanks Kathy. So a little deeper into the expo hall, we're 80% sold out on the show floor already, and that number's actually gone up a little bit since we created the slot. So we're thrilled to have lots of our current exhibitors, as well as many new faces at this year's event. As Kathy mentioned, we have a little bit later start time on the show floor. We listened, and we made that adjustment this year, but we will have 11 and a half hours of exclusive show floor time. And I'll talk a little bit more about receptions and things like that, but this is really important for everybody to know. When we kick off that first look reception, the welcome reception on Sunday evening, everybody's on the show floor, lots of interaction and engagement, and we don't have any other events or education or meetings conflicting with that show floor time. So this is a huge opportunity to meet with those new partners. And then we are also going to have the networking lunches on the show floor. Again, that keeps everybody there during that time that they should be for the exhibit hall. And so a little bit closer look into the expo hall, just to give you kind of an overall view of the expo hall map here, just to give you some insight. And you can see there at the top of the map, that's where the lunch area is going to be. So lots of traffic, regardless of where you are on that show floor. It is vibrant and well-attended. So really excited about this year's show floor. And now with niche and startup ISV alley. So similar to what we've had the past two years, we actually expanded it this year because the last two years, we've sold out for the niche and startup ISV alley. This is designed for first-time ISV or software solution providers to be able to exhibit at the Retail Now Show. We do have limited space remaining for 2024. So if you're interested and you've never exhibited at Retail Now and you're an ISV or software solution provider, reach out and let us help you with that. And then also, we have some additional exhibitor options. As I mentioned earlier, no meetings off the show floor when the expo hall is going on, but we do realize that sometimes you need to have private conversations. So we do have private rooms on the show floor that are available for you to rent throughout the entire event. So let us know if you would like access to those, or if you're interested. And then also, brand new this year, I know you get lots of outreaches, and Jim's going to talk a little bit more about it here in a few minutes, about purchasing the Retail Now attendee list. This year, it is going to be available for purchase for exhibiting companies only. To be able to access that list, it'll be available about two weeks post-show after Retail Now. But if you're interested in purchasing that attendee list, let me know or reach out to us at membership@gospa.org, and we can reserve that post-show attendee list for you. Also, when it comes to meetings for after-hours, receptions, and things like that, I know I've already talked to many of you, and we've started booking these spaces. We do have vendor meeting spaces available. Certainly, I know it's a fun time to be able to network and engage with your partners after hours. We do have spaces available, whether you want to do partner meetings, partner trainings, receptions, happy hours, things like that. We do have very limited space, but this is going to be one of the most affordable ways to do that in Vegas. And we will also, once you secure the meeting space with us, then we connect you with the, if you need AV, or you need food and beverage and that sort of thing, we connect you with our contacts at the hotel, and then you're able to work directly with them on all of the logistics around that. So if you have any questions about vendor meeting space, let us know. Again, membership@gospa.org, or you can reach out to me or your Member Services Manager. In addition, Kathy mentioned earlier, the community receptions. So first thing we're going to kick off with on Sunday evening, July 28, from 4:30 to 5:30, it's going to be the ISV and Cannabis Community Reception. Fantastic networking event. We always have a ton of folks attend this. So if you're looking to network and engage with those ISVs, as well as the Cannabis Community, please make sure that you're arranging your travel plan so you can get in earlier. The Canadian Community event is going to be Sunday 9 after the welcome reception on the show floor. So we will continue through the evening. So that's going to be from 7 to 8 for our Canadian Community. And then the Next Gen and W2W Communities are going to have a combined event as well. So that's going to be on Monday, July 29, from 5 to 6:30 PM after we wrap up education. So again, plan your agenda. I know we have lots of exciting things going on, and your vendor partners will as well. So making sure that you allow time for everything, and again, looking forward to seeing everybody there. And now I'm going to turn it over to Kathy to dive a little deeper into some of the education highlights for the event. Kathy?
Thanks, Ashley. As Ashley mentioned, we're super excited again this year to be offering 20 educational sessions throughout the conference for our attendees. We do have some new additions, as well as some that we're bringing back by popular demand. So as usual, we've organized our education into different tracks, and we'll have our traditional executive education, as well as ISV education. We are in the process this week and next of finalizing which sessions we will be offering. So I've put a couple of example titles, but please, I encourage you to continue to check the agenda, check the website, as we will be adding to the sessions, as well as highlighting the speakers for the next, you know, several weeks leading up to the event. So we'll have an executive education track. We'll have a dedicated ISV education track. And then we'll also be offering a sales, marketing, and customer service track. In this particular track this year, we'll be doing a panel discussion, unlocking secrets of selling to the different generations of customer in the marketplace. So that promises to be interesting. We'll also have what we're referring to as retail IT industry essentials. You definitely don't want to miss these sessions. They're fundamentals, fundamental instructional sessions. And then new this year, we're going to be offering express education. So these express education sessions will be, they'll feature focused presentations, and they're aimed at providing the attendees with quick access to valuable information or knowledge on a very specific topic. So we have selected several topics, including leadership development, security, portfolio expansion, and we're, we're asking presenters to prioritize what's most important for our attendees to know in these particular areas, and deliver 10- to 12-minute engaging sessions. The themes, as I mentioned, we're focusing on leadership development, portfolio expansion, and security. And what you can expect is to attend one of these sessions, and within that 45-minute block, hear three very short, but impactful presentations from three different speakers in that session, as well as an opportunity for Q&amp;A. So as you can see, with the five tracks and all the express education sessions, there's a lot to cover from an education point of view, plus all the show floor features that Ashley mentioned. It's virtually impossible for you to do all of that by yourself, which is why we always encourage people to bring more than one representative from their company. And we're going to continue to make it easy for you to do that. Ashley, do you want to share those details?
Yeah, thanks Kathy. As Kathy shared, a ton of great education and content, and we want you to be able to expand that amongst your team. So for our VARs or resellers in DISDs, those are our direct-selling ISVs, we do have the opportunity for Bring One More this year. This has been super popular for the last few years. So when you buy your first pass to Retail Now, the second pass is free for you to bring somebody else from your team. I know many of you, as I've been talking to you, and our travels on the road, and our conversations on the phone, you're expanding your teams, you're growing your teams, you want to help grow them from a developmental standpoint as well. This is a fantastic opportunity to do that, and to be able to take advantage of all of that education, meet all of the new partners, and be able to have those conversations. So if you have any questions about the Bring One More program, let us know. If you have not received your code yet for the Bring One More, again, this is for resellers and direct-selling or ISVs or DISDs, let us know, and we can get that to you. The email address, membership@gospa.org, and we'll be able to get that for you. But definitely would love for you to bring additional folks from your team and want to help you do that. So now I'm going to turn it over to Jim to share a little bit with us in terms of things to watch out for. Jim?
Yeah, thanks Ashley. Ashley and Kathy get to share all the good news. I get to do here like the legal disclaimer, be careful. So, so what, anybody who's attended in the past, or somehow you get on a list, and you'll be inundated with third parties that are saying, "Hey, we've got a deal for Retail Now Hotels," or "We can sell you the Retail Now list." Those third parties are not affiliated with the association at all. So any communications you're going to receive about the event in any way, whether it's by phone, or electronic, verbal, or print, they will come directly from the association. So any third-party offer that you do receive, it's a scam, it's not legitimate. Please, please alert the RSPA. We don't want somebody giving their credit card information to somebody who's going to do something nefarious with it, or somebody who says, "Oh yeah, I have the list." My favorite thing is where, like, we'll even receive from an RSPA staff standpoint, "I have the Retail Now list, and there are 7,000 attendees on the list," and we're like, "Wow, that would be fantastic," you know, if we went from 1,532 to 7,000 in one year. But again, those lists are not legitimate, and we just ask you to be careful and alert us, and don't click on anything in those either. So what a lot of times will happen, especially if you're an exhibitor, right, Ashley shared that show floor earlier, the expo hall, your company names are on there, and they will start just pulling lists and slamming them together. So again, if you do receive one of those, let us know, forward it to us, and then delete it, because we don't want anybody to be, to fall prey to any of those. So, all right. So that is like, it's all good news here, and that's like the 60 seconds of bad news to share with you. So, okay, so where do we go from here? What actions do you take after this Town Hall? It's as easy as one, two, three. The first step is to register for Retail Now. You want to get you signed up, make sure that you are on the list at this point. Another thing you're going to want to do is book your hotel room today, right? Space is limited, and it's only $169 a night is a special discounted room rate for you to stay at the Paris, right? You can, anybody who stayed at the Paris before, the convention center is right nearby where everybody's going to be staying. So it's a quick elevator ride and walk down the hallway in order to get there. But again, if you don't book now, we've been selling out our allocated discounted room block several years in a row. So you want to make sure you register now, you book now, and then you go and schedule your flight, and then you can go and meet everybody. Again, we're anticipating 1,600 or more individuals attending this event. Again, everybody, those VARs, direct independent software developers, payment companies, distributors, hardware providers, it is the place where the industry meets. All right. And if you're saying, "Wait a second, how do I do all that? Can you make it easy and convenient for me?" We have done that. You can see the URL that's on your screen there, goRSPA.org/retailnow. I just dropped that link to the entire audience who is attending here live. And if you want to do this all over your phone, you've got the QR code there. You can just take a picture of that. It'll redirect you to the RSPA website. Again, that's where you can go to register. That's where you can go see the updated agenda, the speaker list when that becomes available. You've got a link in order to register and get the discounted hotel room block. You can see the expo hall. There's frequently asked questions. All sorts of information about Retail Now is available, again, at goRSPA.org/retailnow. All right. So those are all the fundamentals of the event and all the details that we had to share with you. But I know we asked in advance for questions. This is your opportunity now. You've got through our platform here to drop in your own questions. So feel free to ask away, and I'm going to turn it over to Kathy, and Kathy's going to start sharing with us. We're going to answer some of the questions that we received before we began this event. So Kathy, this is a time for you to quiz yourself and Ashley and me. I can't wait to see who ends up winning this game show. So...
Great. Well, the good news is, we received three questions prior to the event that I can answer. So let me start, let me start with those because they're all related. It's about education. The first one was around, somebody asked if education would be held on the show floor. Just to remind everybody who has attended, and to let people know who have not attended, we do not hold education on the show floor. We have dedicated breakout rooms for our education sessions, and our education never conflicts with show floor hours. When education is going on, the show floor is closed. When the show floor is going on, that is the only thing that's happening in our event. The second question around education was, are the education sessions auditorial? No. Again, for those of you who have attended in the past, we do not do education that contains sales pitches. We're very deliberate in selecting our speakers and coaching them around delivering impactful and objective content for our attendees. We're very deliberate in selecting our speakers and coaching them around delivering impactful and objective content for our attendees. And then the last education question was around what time the sessions end on Tuesday for specifically for making travel plans back home. The education and the conference itself will end at 4:00 PM on Tuesday. Since we are in Vegas, a lot of flights back east leave much later at night. So it's easy to stay and take advantage of everything that the conference has to offer this year because you're not running to the airport to catch a flight. So those, those were the education questions. Let me move on. Ashley, I'm hoping you can help with this one. What is included with each of the exhibit booths?
Yep. So for our exhibitors, the good news is this year's show, it's in a ballroom. So it's already carpeted. So it's up to you. If you want to order your own carpet, you may do so, but you don't have to. There will be carpet there. And of course, depending on the size of your booth, if you're in a 10 by 10, you get two passes to the event. If you're in larger booths, you get more. And then it'll have pipe and drake. But as far as your furniture setup, electrical, internet, that kind of stuff. You'll be able to order that either through GES, who is our on show site provider. Or through the hotel for the internet, electrical, or even FMB for your booth. I know some folks like to have. Refreshments and things like that in their booths. So we do have options. So let us know and we can help you with that. And then for our startup alley exhibitors, so for those first time ISV exhibitors. Your booth does include a countertop and it includes the electrical. Of course, the carpet is there and you get a chair and a wastebasket included. And again, that's for our startup alley first time exhibitors. Hope that helps. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Great information. Maybe you can help me with this next one too. We can probably both have a little to contribute. So what's new for this year's event?
So I'll speak from the attendee side of things and the show floor. I think the, the really big thing Jim mentioned earlier, we've added 119 new members. And those are new individual member companies, not people, right? So having those new faces at the show in the community is super helpful. We're also going to have with that on the show floor, new technologies, new things that are trending, getting ready to hit the market. I know I've talked to some of our vendors and software companies that are going to be showcasing brand new things that they're going to be launching at Retail Now. So that's going to be a new addition. And just overall, just again, the communities and things like that and the receptions that we talked about. I think you're going to see a lot more new opportunities there from an engagement standpoint. And Kathy, I don't know if you want to. Share a little bit about, you know, education and some of those areas.
Yes. So probably what's, what's new for this year's event itself is Las Vegas. We're finally back in Las Vegas after seven years. And we had a lot of people tell us how excited they are to go, that we're going back to Vegas. So that's new. Haven't been there in seven years. New hotel. And again, I want to reiterate something that Jim mentioned, the hotel rate for our block for the conference is $169 a night. That is a really good price for a hotel room nowadays, especially in the city of Las Vegas. So that block will sell out very quickly. So be sure to, in addition to registering, that you take advantage of that hotel block. And then, as I mentioned, we've got some new times for the education, Monday morning. And then we also are adding in a new education track, the express education that has a different format from your traditional breakout session. So lots of exciting things going on. From a what's new perspective.
And Kathy and Ashley, if you don't mind me jumping in here, I feel like I'm falling behind if we are keeping score in terms of this being a game show. No, but the thing I wanted to share is, so I was talking to one of our members today and he's been coming to the event for almost 10 years now. He was with a big company first, launched his own company about six years ago. And he was talking about Retail Now. And he said, you know, every year you go in and you think, am I going to see just the same people? Am I going to meet somebody new? And a lot of times folks are looking to shore up their partnerships, right? So they do want to see folks that they have met before, but everybody wants to establish, you know, some, some new partnerships as well or discover some new things. And he said, every year, he doesn't know exactly how it happens, doesn't know where it's going to come from. But he said, he gets one or two new partners at the event every single year. And that is one of, I think, the biggest values of the association, like all this stuff that we're talking about. And I are right now previewing what's going to happen in what, one, two, a little over three months from now. But so we don't know where your next new partner is going to come from, but we can say, if you don't go to the event, you're guaranteed to not meet them. If I can use a double negative. But again, folks who've attended this event historically, if you get unengaged and go to the education sessions and go to the networking event. And spend time on the show floor, you're going to meet, you know, a potential new partner and somebody who's going to help your business. So we can preview for you everything that we, that's planned new for the event. But the new blood that gets injected every year into new folks who are checking out the community. Definitely going to happen this year, as Ashley alluded to, we have 119 new members. A big chunk of them are sure to show up at the event. So. All right. Yeah, there's a lot new going on at the event, right? We're going to have the same great community feel, but a lot of new things as well.
Excellent. Thanks, Jim. Let's actually stay with that new theme. And maybe you can help with this on, will there be a new class for the next gen Rising Stars 40 under 40?
Yeah, Ashley, do you want to take that first? Do you want me to?
Yeah, so I'll, I'll share some thoughts and then I'll pivot to you, Jim. The answer is yes, we will have a new class. For the, the next gen Rising Stars 40 under 40. We just had the call for nominations and boy, were we excited about the response. We had nearly 100 submissions for that and I'm really excited about this year's next gen. Rising Stars for sure. And Jim, I don't know if you want to share a little bit more detail about that new group?
Yeah. So again, we have our next gen community that talks about next gen leadership, next gen technology. But they're just so part of why we started the, the next gen Rising Stars last year was. You know, a lot of the folks who are well known in the industry or speak in the industry, they're folks who have been, you know, in the, the retail IT channel, you know, 20, 30 years. And we're looking to see if there's a new platform where some of these folks who maybe would be under the radar can get some more attention and can interact with one another. And it really took off in terms of the quality of and quantity of nominations last year. And then the engagement of that group with each other and with the rest of the community. And this year, it's, I mean, it's even more than that. Again, we haven't announced the list. We will announce it at Retail Now. Those individuals will be honored at Retail Now, but it's just really fabulous to see. Folks for years, again, I've been going to Retail Now events since 2006. Been going to RSP events and ever since then, and I'm sure it happened before then, people are talking about channel sustainability. Who's next? Who are the next leaders? And man, we have a ton of fabulous talent, both under 40 and over 40 inside the association. So the Rising Stars give the opportunity to see some of those folks who are under 40 you might not have ever met before. And yeah, it's going to be another great group again this year. So yes, you will see next gen Rising Stars at Retail Now. And if you go onto the RSP website right now, or just do a Google search for RSPA Rising Stars. You'll be able to see those individuals and we have everybody's LinkedIn profile that you can connect with them as well. So. Yeah, again, we're all about accelerating the success of our members through knowledge and connections. And the Rising Stars is another avenue to, to do that.
Great. Thank you. Next question, will AI be a topic at this year's show? So yes, the answer to that is yes. You will be able to find AI, I am sure, all over the exhibit hall. As well as we will have several education sessions dedicated to and focused on different aspects of AI. So we will, we will not forget that as a topic.
And the one thing, if I can add to that Kathy, I've been to some shows, I'm not going to name the show. But where people are calling out AI and it's almost anything that's technology related, like, ooh, it's AI, it's the new buzzword. We know that our members are, they need more than that. They need more than the buzzwords. As one of our members told us, 80% of what you hear about AI is a bunch of BS, but the other 20% is absolutely magical. We're going to focus on that 20% part of it and have speakers and exhibitors. Who are talking about actual artificial intelligence applications. That you can help to improve your own business and help to improve your merchant. So it's not just going to be like AI for the sake of AI and latching onto a buzzword. There's, there's going to be meaningful specifics at this show.
Yep. Good point. Great point. Ashley, I think this one might be for you. When can we sign up to attend?
Right now, as Jen mentioned earlier, you can scan the QR code. So definitely you want to register. And I cannot stress enough, please book your hotel room so that you can take advantage of the lower pricing. And also it is always easier when we are all under one roof. So we'd love to have you sign up now. And if you need help with that, again, you can email us at membership@gorsp.org or reach out to. Myself or anyone on our team and we would be happy to help.
And Ashley, just so I'm just thinking as I go through this, because we've attended a lot of events. That you just said, all under one roof. That is one really beneficial thing about our event. It's designed to be under one roof. For the hotel, the convention center, the restaurants, the networking events, they're all right next to each other. You don't have to go from different building to building or, you know, it's a very, very manageable event. And that's part of what gives it that community feel to it. That doesn't mean you should, you know, wear shoes that are going to hurt your feet. You're still going to have some walking to do because again, you know, we have a pretty good footprint there. But that's one thing that we really designed is to try to keep everybody in the same area to help with those, you know, serendipitous interactions that folks have. So again, if folks haven't attended before, that's one thing that we try to do and we've done it this year and we'll be doing the next few years. Everything's going to be under one roof, you know, connected by a hallway. So.
Got a few more. Ashley, what's included in the attendee list?
Great question. So for the post-show attendee list, it'll be the company name, the first name, the last name and the email address. And then of course, I always let everybody know, one of the things that we do here at the RSPA are warm introductions. So if you need further introductions or connections beyond that, we're happy to help with those. But the attendee list will certainly have the key details that you will need to connect with folks after the show.
Great. Thank you. So we have all heard that things are getting more expensive. Seem to increase in price day after day. So shows are also getting more expensive. Ashley, what are some of the things that we're doing to help our members offset some of those costs for attending shows?
Yeah. So a couple of things. I'll start with our exhibitors first. Certainly if you are a, we call a channel supported vendor or ISV. And you are exhibiting and you're a returning exhibitor. You know, being able to have a place on the show floor not only gives you that visibility to the community and having a presence there. But it also makes it more affordable for you from an attendance standpoint and additional passes. We can help you in terms of the cost for those, but we try to streamline those costs and to keep that down for you. Also, for our, for a reseller standpoint or a direct selling ISV standpoint, we've incorporated the Bring One More opportunity. Kathy mentioned, or you mentioned Kathy, the hotel pricing at the 169 a night. And then, you know, that, those are all measures that we're, you know, have in place to be able to help with those costs. And like Jim shared, this is an opportunity to meet with so many of your partners, whether it's current partners or folks that you want to engage with. All are under one roof. So that can help you from a travel expense throughout the year as well.
Yeah, those are all really good points. I would think I would throw in there, don't forget the early bird pricing. Or. That ends in June. So that's why we're encouraging everybody to register as soon as possible. You'll see the QR code on the screen. And then the other thing I would mention is that your conference registration does include lunch each day. And then we'll call it hors d'oeuvres and finger foods at the different receptions, as well as heavy hors d'oeuvres during the welcome reception. And snacks and beverages during breaks. So we do, we do try and provide some of those, some of those meals and some of that food. To also offset those, those travel costs. Okay. And then finally, I think, I'm checking, but I think this might be our last question. Jim, I'm going to throw this one to you. You seem to be projecting an increase in attendance. Why are you saying that when we hear about vendors cutting your marketing budgets this year?
Thanks Kathy. And before I answer that again, so this is everybody's last chance, those who are listening live, to drop your question into the chat. Because this is the last one we've received so far. So yeah, so like Ashley shared earlier, we had 1,532 last year. Anticipating at least 1,600, if not more this year. And so there are a few factors behind that. So one, which we've alluded to on this call, back in Vegas, RSPA tends to have. You know, whenever it has an event in Vegas, whether it's called Expo Tech or Retail Now, having the best attendance. Especially among the small businesses, especially among the resellers. So like we just said, even though there's some vendors who maybe didn't hit the numbers that they wanted to in 2023 from a sales standpoint. And you know, it's been no secret, right? When some of these large public companies are doing anything related to layoffs or cutting back or things of that nature. So the vast majority of folks again, who attend our event fit into that smaller business category. A lot of them are having good years. A lot of them want to go to Retail Now for all the reasons that we mentioned so far. There's also something, we've been actually talking about this for a while and it's going to be interesting to see, like which companies are. Investing in their channel and investing in their growth at Retail Now. Because we know from talking to our members, VARs are going to be there, software providers are going to be there. Because they're looking to expand their portfolio because that's what they know they need to do. They need to sell. You know, upline, they want to sell more to their current partners in order to have that better, you know, recurring revenue and, and continue to go down that path. We know the buyers, if you want to call them that, they're going to be there, the ones who are connecting directly with the merchants, the VARs and those direct independent software developers. And so that's why we're projecting stronger growth in those areas. And we're really calling on a lot of the vendors. Again, you can see the exhibit sales are strong right now. But you know, this is the year to meet those partners where they are, meet those VARs and direct independent software developers and the, the ISVs. They're looking for new partners and you're not going to meet them, they're not going to show up and knock on your door, right? If you're working virtually, they're not going to show up at your home and do that. You're going to be able to find them at Retail Now. And you know, tying it with a prior question about, you know, from an expense standpoint. You know, we, we make sure this show doesn't have some overhead that some of the other events do. Strongly encourage folks to, especially again, I think I'm pitching probably more to those, those vendors. You know, to get a 10 by 10 booth, what is it Ashley? What's the member discount to get a 10 by 10 booth?
4550.
Yeah. So 4550, that includes a couple passes to the show as well?
Correct, two.
Yeah. So you get two passes to the event. And so again, those vendors who are on the fence, you know, spend the money, you know, for about under $10,000. You can get your booth, your passes, your hotel, your flights, all that stuff. And you'll be able to engage with, you know, 1,600 or more solution providers. So we've felt this way for many, many months in terms of where it's leading in, because based on the feedback of our members. And as Ashley alluded to, you know, registration right now is trending 49% ahead of where it's been at its peak the last several years at this point. So again, all things are lining up that it's going to be a very, very well attended event. And so if your vendor is on the fence of should I or shouldn't I, my guess is on July 31st or August 1st. When you're hearing the final numbers from the show and you're getting the anecdotes about what a great and well attended event it was. We don't want you to have what FOMO, the fear of missing out. So again, you see the URL on the screen, it's in the chat. Register today. If you have any questions about exhibiting or anything related, again, membership@gorsp.org. We will get back to you right away. So. All right, Kathy, was that the final question?
Let me do one more check. I believe it was. I don't see any more that have been submitted.
All right. Fabulous. Well, Ashley, thank you. Kathy, thank you. For everybody who listened and. All right, fabulous. Well, Ashley, thank you. Kathy, thank you. For everybody who listened and attended, thank you to all our sponsors. Thank you very much for making this all possible. And everybody who's attended a Retail Now in the past and who's planning to attend this year, we thank you. The community is really what makes the RSPA go. And so we're so thrilled to be hosting Retail Now back in Vegas and get to see everybody again, get to see many of our good friends and business partners. And we look forward to meeting a lot of new folks there as well and welcoming you to our community. So again, save the date, register today, our Retail Now 2024, July 20th through 30th at the Paris Hotel in Las Vegas. It is where the industry meets and we hope to meet you there as well. Thanks for your time today and have a tremendous rest of your day, everybody. Bye-bye.